Regular meeting number two will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the national anthem. Happy for Dorn, please sit in the lead.
(inaudible) United States of America, and you, the Republic, which stands one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening council is pleased to have Pastor Amy Aspie lead pastor at Short North Church to pray with us. Pastor, welcome back to council.
Let us pray. God of us all, and not just some, may our gathering this night and each night be a source of blessing for not just some in our community, but the whole community. May we seek to constantly do the hard work of understanding one another and the needs of those we serve. May we be quicker to listen than we are to speak and grant compassion to hear what is spoken beyond words, in silence, in suffering, in tears, and in laughter. Giver of wisdom, grant us discerning minds for the decisions before us this evening and in the year ahead. Instead of problems, expand our minds to see possibilities and to never lose sight of the people who will be impacted. Guide us in discovering solutions that do not compound suffering, especially of the most vulnerable. And as we approach Martin Luther King Day, may Dr. King's prophetic dream embolden our work. May we too have the audacity to both believe and tirelessly work for a world where people everywhere can have three meals a day for their bodies, education and culture of their minds, and dignity, equality, and freedom for their spirits. Because injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. Guide us in the ways of justice and remind us at the end of the day that there isn't an "us" and "them," there is "us." Thank you for this opportunity to serve, and please bless our families as our work impacts those closest to us in countless ways. May our community be a more just, loving, and kind place because of our leadership. In the name of all that is holy, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
This community lost a good Irishman, a convener, a father, a friend, and Mr. Mark Dempsey. Would you indulge us as we take a moment of silence for Mr. Mark Dempsey?
Thank you.
Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remy, Tyson, President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
One matter of housekeeping this evening. The council committee assignments for 2020 will remain the same as in 2019. We will republish them in the minutes of this evening's meeting as part of the official record. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal?
So move.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Not this time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any resolutions by members of council, starting with President Potem?
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Council President. I do have one resolution this evening. I would ask Blake Griffin from the Columbus Division of Police Hockey Team and Mr. Sean Moore from the Division of Fire Hockey Team to please approach the podium. Today, I'm presenting Resolution 004-2018 to recognize the fifth annual First Responders' Face Off. Whereas the First Responders' Face Off is a friendly hockey game between the Columbus Division of Police and the Columbus Division of Fire, proceeds from the First Responders' Face Off go to the Hockey Helping Heroes Program that assists first responders and their families following a line of duty injury or death. And whereas the Hockey Helping Heroes Program provides educational grants for children of first responders lost in the line of duty, also health and safety equipment to first responders to enhance their safety on duty, financial assistance for the first responders and their families in times of tragedy and unexpected loss, and mobility assistance for first responders impacted by life-altering disability. Whereas first responders are dedicated professionals including emergency dispatchers, law enforcement personnel, firefighters, emergency medical service personnel, search and rescue teams, and many other heroes of the public safety. And every day, our first responders risk their own safety and personal well-being in the performance of their duties, willingly serving and protecting the citizens of Columbus while eliminating potential threats to public safety and welfare. And whereas first responders are vital members of every Columbus neighborhood who selfishly serve on the front lines of the most dangerous situations and circumstances, and whose dedication is essential to maintaining safety and preserving order in times of crisis, now and therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Columbus, that this council has hereby recognized the fifth annual First Responders' Face Off and expresses its gratitude to all of the Columbus first responders for their outstanding contributions to the safety and well-being of the citizens of Columbus. And I need to point out, Fire has won this event three out of the past four events, and I'm sure that Blake is going to speak for that. If there are no comments from my colleagues, I move for adoption.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopt it.
That being stated, Blake, you have the microphone first.
Thank you, honorable council members. Appreciate taking the time to make this proclamation to honor and celebrate first responders in our community, not just police and fire, but all first responders. It's an honor and privilege to work with one of the finest law enforcement agencies in the nation. And to respond, yes, at this point in time, I do believe that it's the police that hold any and all trophies in this rivalry. Even though this is the fifth of the First Responder Face Off, this is the 20th meeting over 20 years that we will be meeting on the ice to determine the victor. So as the motto from the Columbus Police Hockey Team, "Beat Fire."
Sean.
Council President, council members, thanks for having Blake myself up here today. And I'd like to echo what he said, appreciate the support out on the street and here this week with the First Responder Face Off and on the ice. So yeah, as we were discussing the other day in the locker room, basically wouldn't be a rivalry if we didn't let them win every once in a while. So we're looking forward to this weekend and have another spirited fun match and celebrate our brotherhood together and serve the citizens of Columbus. Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dorn.
Thank you, Council President Harden. No resolutions this evening. Just wanted to make an announcement of my January community hours will be taking place at the MLK Branch, the Columbus Library, next Wednesday, January 22nd, 5:30 to 7:00 PM. Since we're on the east side, we'll be enjoying some pizza from Yellow Brick. So come on out next week and join me for a slice of pizza, and let me know what's going on in your neighborhood. Thanks. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Remy. Thank you. Councilmember Tyson.
Yes, I do have a resolution this evening. And look at that sea of blue and white in council chambers this evening. You certainly want to recognize the other sororities that are here, but we certainly like the blue and white. And so I have Resolution 15X-2020, and I'm going to ask President Charity Martin King, as well as, you know, all the Zetas to come up to the podium, be my guests. Trying to get the whole group in, if that's okay.
That's okay.
Hope I can move your podium. Of course, I ask after I move it. I get it. Okay. Almost ready. I see Kendall Lee for the Harper. Excellent. Tarver. Good. Ushry, thank you. Okay. Madam State Director, is she close to me? All right. Thank you. Okay, we're ready.
Okay. This resolution is to honor and congratulate the ladies of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated on the occasion of the sorority's 100th anniversary, and to thank the ladies of Zeta for their commitment and service to the residents of Columbus and Central Ohio. Whereas Zeta Phi Beta was founded on January 16th, 1920, by five young women on the campus of Howard University located in Washington, DC. And since its founding, not only has the organization raised a consciousness of its people, but it has encouraged the highest standards of scholastic achievement and fosters a greater sense of unity, ultimately improving the human condition for all and the Black community specifically. Whereas Zeta Phi Beta promotes scholarship, service, sisterhood, and finer womanhood within its membership. It also actively promotes these values within the communities that it serves. Moreover, the organization has devoted countless hours of volunteer service, educating the public, assisting youth, providing scholarships, elevating organized charities, and promoting legislation supporting social and civic change. And whereas Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated has chartered hundreds of chapters and initiated thousands of women around the world, continuing to thrive and flourish while adopting the changing needs of society. The women of Zeta Phi Beta have been serving in Columbus since September 4th of 1943, when the Gamma Zeta Zeta Chapter was organized as a graduate chapter in the city of Columbus. The organization has a diverse membership of professional women committed to serving and improving Columbus. The Gamma Zeta Zeta Chapter also serves as sponsor to the Xi Gamma Chapter at the Ohio State University, and this chapter was chartered January 27th of 1969. Whereas each of the members of Zeta are committed to a spirit of sisterly love, moreover, the ladies of Zeta continue to radiate the essence of finer womanhood through their obligations in Central Ohio by mentoring, encouraging, and supporting young women in the community, ultimately preparing them for a future of service and leadership. Whereas this year, Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated will celebrate and observe the centennial anniversary of the sorority by celebrating the leadership and service of Zeta throughout the United States. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Columbus. This council does hereby honor and congratulate the ladies of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated on the occasion of its sorority's 100th anniversary, and thank the ladies of Zeta for their commitment and service to the residents of Columbus and Central Ohio. Be it further resolved by the council of the city of Columbus that January 16th of 2020 will be proclaimed as Zeta Day in the city of Columbus. And moreover, City Hall and downtown Columbus will be lit up in blue to honor the legacy of leadership and service that the Zeta Phi Beta continues to radiate throughout our community. I move for adoption.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you. Now, I also have three resolutions because we have three chapters that are really represented here tonight. And so I'm going to now turn over the podium and the mic to President Martin to share comments, to be able to introduce. I want everyone to really say their names. We don't, we have a kind of short meeting tonight, they can say their names, as well as the other presidents. So the floor is yours.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Greetings, President Harden. It's always excellent to see you, members of city council, and of course, Councilmember Pacilla Tyson. I want to thank you first and foremost for your leadership concerning Black women with your Commission on Black Girls and your exceptional trailblazing forethought in that area. We thank you for that very much. So thank you so much. I'm Charity Martin King, President Gamma Zeta Zeta Chapter here in Columbus, Ohio, chartered September 4th, 19 what?
Forty-three.
So we are over 75 years serving the Columbus community. I also, as a show of solidarity, have invited our leadership because this is a historic occasion. Zeta Phi Beta Sorority has a number of significant firsts, one of which being the first to charter of the HBGLO, Historically Black Greek Letter Organization, south of the Mason-Dixon line, in addition to being in Africa and within the past couple of years as far as Dubai. We represent members in the thousands, the many numbers across the globe. And for us to see in our lifetime the dream of five coeds at Howard University on January 16th, 1920, is not just an honor, it is a very surreal moment. Many of our members are also already in Washington, DC, where we are doing a significant drive to support homeless and displaced individuals with a lot of the things that we're doing with our Z-Hope initiatives as well across the country and internationally. So the celebrations have already begun. I'd like to yield the microphone at this time for some introductions. As a show of solidarity, we have invited many of the leadership because we are not the first to reach the Centennial Club of the HBGLO, but we are certainly the finest. But at this time... Had to throw it in. So I'd like for standing with me tonight are our Brothers of Phi Beta Sigma. We are the only organization to be constitutionally bound to a fraternity. Our Brothers of Phi Beta Sigma, who were chartered January 9th, 1914. So I ask the Blue and White leadership primarily to introduce themselves and also standing with us. I am so honored and it is a privilege to have the National Pan-Hellenic Council leadership here with us as well, the presidents of those organizations. I'm going to yield to them as well to introduce themselves. Blue and White first, please, and in that order. Thank you.
Good evening. I am Natasha Smith. I am the president of Sigma Iola Zeta Chapter, based in Reynoldsburg, Ohio. We were chartered on June 20th, 2001, and we are just excited to be here and have this recognition. Thank you.
Good evening, Council President, council members. On behalf of the 25th International Grand Bassist Valerie Hollingsworth Baker and our great late Regional Director Connie V. Pugh, I am EC. I am the State Director of Ohio, and I bring you greetings and much appreciation for this great honor. And I would also like to invite you to our 2020 Centennial State Celebration here in Columbus on October 30th through the 31st. So I'll be sending that out so you can see Zeta's doing work in this community. Thank you.
Good evening, John Meriwether. I'm the president of Beta Omega Con Sigma Chapter of the Columbus, Ohio Alumni Chapter, and I bring greetings from our International President, Brother Michael Kristal, the 27th, 29th International President, Dr. Quaterdy Womack, who's actually in our graduate chapter, our State Director, who's not here today, Brother Justin Gibson. And we're just celebrating our Founder's Day, January 9th, 1914. So we're here with them today. We didn't get to come here before that for them, but thank you very much for that.
Good evening. My name is Andre Harper. I'm the president of the Rokai Sigma Chapter of Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated. We were founded two years ago. We service metropolitan Columbus, primarily the suburban, outer loop communities. And so it is indeed a great honor to be here in solidarity, not only with our Blue and White family, but all the other members of the Pan-Hellenic Council. And just to think, 100 years ago, two lovers were out on a stroll on the campus of Howard University, and 100 years later, here we are, standing with thousands upon thousands of members of both organizations. So I am, just happen to be a South Floridian by nature, and you were asked, well, why is a South Floridian, what is he doing in Columbus, Ohio? Well, 20 years ago, on the campus of Florida A&amp;M University, this young man happened to fall in love with a young lady from Columbus, Ohio. And so the rest is history, as they say. So it is indeed an honor. Thank you.
Council President Harden, council members, thank you so much for having us here. My name is Luke Fedlam. I'm a member of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, founded December 4th, 1906. I'm the Vice President of Alpha Phi Lambda Chapter, and on behalf of all the Alphas around the world, we'd like to congratulate the ladies of Zeta Phi Beta on joining the Centennial Club. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Essence Brian Kendrick. I'm the president of the Xi Gamma Chapter at the Ohio State University. We were chartered January 27th, 1968, and I'd just like to thank you for the opportunity to be here today.
Councilmember Tyson, President Harding, all of the members of city council, we were charred Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, Alpha Sigma Omega Chapter. Our sorority was founded January 15th, 1908, on Howard University campus. We are the first of the Divine Nine among the ladies to be a part of the 100 Club. But I'm so glad to be here to celebrate my beautiful sisters in blue and white in both chapters and also the State Director as well. We want to encourage you to continue doing the beautiful work that you're doing. And city councilmen, thank you so much. It is so important that you recognize the work of the Divine Nine. We're in different organizations, but we are one, Greekdom, sister and brotherhood. And we are so proud to have Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated reach their centennial year. Continue moving, continue working, continue striving, and we are behind you all the way.
Good evening, President Harding and the city council. My name is Lisha West, and I am the president of Chi Eta Omega Chapter, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. And as Charlene mentioned, yes, we were founded on the campus of Howard University in 1908, and we are celebrating actually our 112 years on Wednesday. Want to congratulate the ladies of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated on their centennial celebration. And as Charlene mentioned as well, we continue our collaboration with all of the Divine Nine organizations and just support the community 100%. Thank you.
Council President Harden, council members, my name is Jeffrey Ushry. I'm the Pole Mark of the Columbus Alumni Chapter of Kappa Alpha Psi. We were founded January 5th, 1911, so we just celebrated 109 years. On behalf of Darren Jordan, our East Central Province Pole Mark, and Reuben Shelton III, our Grand Pole Mark, we wish the Zetas a happy 100. We, as a member of the National Pan-Hell, we serve and we stand in solidarity with our other Black Greek organizations, and we all do a lot for the city. So thank you, and thank you for having me.
Good evening, President Harden, to the Columbus City Council. I bring you greetings from our 41st Grand Bassist, Dr. David Marion, our 29th District Representative, Lamar T. Cole. My name is Jeffrey Tarver, and I'm a member of the Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated, Zeta Beta Chapter. I crossed at the Ohio State University in 1980, and I try to say I'm from Pennsylvania, but I think I'm from Columbus, Ohio now. I am very honored to stand here before you. Zeta Beta Chapter was chartered in February 19th, 1971, but it was in Dayton, Ohio. So we had the opportunity to move it to Columbus, Ohio in 2019. And even though we were chartered in '71, we're like the little brothers. And I just feel honored to be here amongst the Divine Nine. We stand in solidarity. And I would state to you today that on January 16th, when Columbus turns blue, we will turn our purple into blue too. Thank you very much.
Greetings, Council President Harden and city council. My name is Denise Johnson. I am the president of Sigma Gamma Rhos Sorority Incorporated, Delta Omicron Sigma Chapter. We were founded November 12th, 1922, at Butler University. And I just want to welcome and congratulate, I should say, my Greek Sisters of Zeta Phi Beta on their centennial year celebration. We will be with you celebrating in the coming weeks, and we are very proud of you. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Nakia MacFuller, and I bring you greetings on behalf of my bassist, Dr. Deandra Mall. I am a member of Sigma Gamma Rhos Sorority Incorporated. I own a new Sigma chapter. We were chartered October 25th, 2002, and I'm super excited to celebrate the women of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated. Congratulations.
Greetings, President Harden and council members. I am James Burke, serving as president of the National Pan-Hellenic Council. We would like to thank y'all for this opportunity and celebrate with the wonderful Sisters of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated. Thank you.
As we draw to a close, I would be remiss not to recognize members who serve on their respective chapters, executive boards, or teams. If you could raise your hands, thank you for being here tonight. I would also be remiss, our members who are doves, one of our doves is here tonight, who is 50 years or more serving in our organization, Marva Boswell, who is here tonight. Those who are part of their social action teams and committee chairs of their social action teams of your respective organizations and their chapters, if you could raise your hands as well, they are here tonight, who have done hundreds of voter registrations here in the city of Columbus. They are here. In addition to that, those members that we have in our respective organizations that serve in the US Armed Forces, if you could raise your hands so that we can thank you so much for your service. I think I have everyone. And I know Kendall Lee did not speak, but he is president of Omega Psi Phi Columbus Mu Iola Chapter, who stands with us here tonight. Again, thank you so much, Councilmember Pacilla Tyson, for honoring our 100 year. Thank you, President Harding, members of city council. It is a pleasure to serve. God bless you.
Again, I have your resolutions for you, and I have three resolutions, one for the Ohio State Chapter, certainly one for the Reynoldsburg Chapter, and certainly your chapter. And again, thank you, and what's really refreshing to see is that the solidarity amongst the, all the sororities and fraternities, and the great work that you're doing in our community. And again, congratulations on your 100th anniversary, and it's... And again, congratulations on your 100th anniversary, and it's really, really nice to see you here and the work that you're doing in our community. Congratulations, I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Council Member Tyson.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
Jessica's awesome.
Are there any requests by members of councils for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the City Clerk? Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation?
Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 2907-3150-2019. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance is 3303-3322-2019.
The following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent action. Will the clerk now read those ordinances into the record?
Resolution of Expression 3X-2020, 16X-2020, 348X-2019, 5, 6, 7, and 8X-2020. Recreation of Parks Committee ordinance is 3180-2019, 3205-2019. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance is 3263, 3316, 3327, 3336-2019. Criminal Justice and Judiciary Committee ordinance 3294-2019. Administration Committee ordinance is 3, 4, and 9-2020. Health and Human Services Committee ordinance 3315-2019. Appointments from the Mayor's Office numbered A002, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, and 16-2020.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there any question or comments on the consent portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent? Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Consent agenda items are passed. We will now proceed with the second reading of 30-day table and emergency legislation. The first committee to come before council is Finance. That committee is chaired by President Pro Tim Elizabeth Brown.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Tonight in Finance, I have Resolution 001X-2020 to authorize the City Auditor to request advance payments for all taxes from the Franklin, Fairfield, and Delaware County Auditors during 2020 and to declare an emergency. This is an annual request made by the City of Columbus, granted under the provisions of the Ohio Revised Code. Emergency action is being considered in order to process these payments as soon as possible. Any questions from colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Council President, may I move to Recreation of Parks?
Please.
I have ordinance 3226-2019 to authorize the Director of Recreation of Parks to enter into contract with TruCo Construction Company for the Blue Berliner Park Utility Service Improvement 2019 project, to authorize the transfer of $767,075 within the Recreation of Parks Bond Fund, to amend the 2019 Capital Improvement Budgets Ordinance 1326-2019, to authorize the expenditure of $767,075 from the voted Recreation of Parks Bond Fund, and to declare an emergency. This project will extend sanitary sewer service, water service, and electrical service to fields 18 through 25 at Berliner Park. These improvements will allow the installation of semi-permanent restroom and concession facilities for eight additional fields, increasing the number of full-service fields from 15 to 23. This expansion allows the park to accommodate additional large tournament events. Emergency action is being considered to begin construction as soon as possible to minimize impacts on the 2020 league and tournament schedules. Any questions from colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
And that is all I have in my committees, Council President.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Administration Committee, Public Service Committee, I apologize. Councilmember Mitch Brown is second chair. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. In the absence of Councilmember Favor, I'm presenting ordinance 0024-2020 to amend the 2019 Capital Improvement Budget to authorize the transfer of cash within the Street and Highways Improvement Non-Bond Fund, to appropriate funds within the Federal Transportation Grants Fund, the Transportation Grants Fund, and the Street and Highway Improvement Non-Bond Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter a contract with Shelly &amp; Sands, Inc., for the arterial street rehabilitation on Hamilton Road, I-72 Refugee Road Project, to authorize the expenditure of up to $581,698 from the Streets and Highways Bonds Fund, up to $1,117,937.16 from the Street Highway Improvement Non-Bond Fund, up to $15,225,690.21 from the Federal Transportation Grant Fund, and to up to $3,347,547.2 from the Transportation Grants Fund for the arterial street rehabilitation on Hamilton Road, I-70, the Refugee Road Project, and to declare an emergency. At this particular time, I'd like to ask Director Scott Coe, can she provide us with some, Deputy Director Scott Coe, additional details on this project, such as the proposed start date, will there be curbs, lights, sidewalks to be installed, and the project timeline for completion? Director?
Thank you, Councilmember Brown, President Harden, and other members of council. This project consists of safety and capacity improvements to the Hamilton Road corridor between Refugee Road and I-70. Improvements within this project include additional turn lanes, sidewalks on the east side, a shared-use path on the west side, replacing of aging signal infrastructure, including new mast arms, improved drainage throughout the corridor, lighting along Hamilton Road, service roads along Hamilton Road being repaired and upgraded where needed, as well as construction of curbing gutters throughout the whole length of the corridor. The project includes three locations on Morpsey's Top 100 Regional High Crash Intersections, and they will all be improved. These locations are Hamilton at Refugee, Hamilton at Kingsland Avenue, Hamilton at Groves Road. And the estimated notice to proceed when we expect construction to begin is April 6, 2020, and construction should be completed, per our estimate, by May 27, 2022. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Are there any questions from my councilmembers? Hearing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
That's all I have this evening, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Administration Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Remi. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, President Harden. Tonight, this first ordinance will wrap up the following five ordinances in regards to our healthcare plans, benefits package for the city of Columbus. And so first, I have ordinance number 1, 2020, to make appropriations for the 12 months ending January 31, 2021, for the funding of the city employee insurance programs and declare an emergency. To maintain the employee insurance programs in accordance with the negotiated labor contracts, appropriation is necessary for the continuation of all employee benefits programs. To determine the amounts necessary for the annual appropriation, current utilization and projected future claims were analyzed and trended on the basis of an 18-month trend of actual city utilization in conjunction with industry trends, as well as actuarial services. The appropriation included 2020 budgeted amounts, employee premium contributions, COBRA premium deposits, and prescription drug rebate deposits. I'd like to turn it over to Director Brandon to talk a little bit about the overall scope of these next pieces of legislation.
Thank you, Councilman Remi. Good evening, President Harden, members of council. The ordinance before you, again, is a request to authorize the appropriation of $213,336,240 from the Employee Benefits Trust Fund for the health insurance lines of business. This amount reflects a slight decrease from the appropriated funds in 2019. This legislation is contingent upon the passage of the 2020 operating budget. The five ordinances to follow, in addition to three ordinances on the consent agenda this evening, are contingent upon the passage of this ordinance and request the authorization to enter into contract with vendors to provide insurance coverage. Each insurance line has its own separate contract and expenditure ordinances as follows. So what you will see in the following ordinances is a request to enter into contract with United Healthcare, with Delta Dental, with Vision Service Plan, or VSP, with Dearborn National Life Insurance for the life insurance coverage, and finally, a separate contract with Dearborn National Life Insurance for the Short Term Disability Program. We appreciate the support that we receive from council. This allows us to continue to provide uninterrupted health services to over 23,000 city employees and their eligible dependents. Thank you for your favorable consideration, and if you have any questions this evening, I'll be happy to try to answer those for you.
Thank you very much, Director Brandon. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, I have ordinance number 2, 2020, to authorize the Human Resources Director to enter into a contract with United Healthcare Insurance Company and to provide all eligible employees medical, prescription, and tobacco cessation programs, and eligible terminated employees with COBRA coverage from February 1, 2020 through January 31, 2021, to authorize the expenditure of $199,826,000 from the Employee Benefits Fund, or so much thereof as may be necessary to pay the cost of said contract and to declare an emergency. In 2019, a request for proposal in accordance with Chapter 329 of the Columbus City Code was offered for medical and prescription programs. Ten insurance companies submitted bids, and after a thorough evaluation by the five-member evaluation committee, two were determined to be finalists. The Evaluation Committee reviewed the proposals based on the following criteria: competency to perform, quality, and feasibility of the offerer's technical proposal, ability to perform the required service competently, past performance and cost structure of the proposal. Following extensive interviews and evaluation, United Healthcare Insurance Company was recommended as the medical and prescription insurance administrator. In addition, it was recommended that delivery of the tobacco cessation and COBRA programs would be administered more effectively and efficiently by United Healthcare Insurance Company. All recommendations were approved, and United Healthcare Insurance Company will provide services for all four programs. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, I have ordinance number 5, 2020, to authorize the Human Resources Director to modify and extend the contract with Delta Dental Plan of Ohio, Inc., to provide all eligible employees dental insurance coverage from February 1, 2020 through January 31, 2021, to authorize the expenditure of $7,645,000 from the Employee Benefits Fund, or so much thereof as may be necessary to pay the cost of said contract and to declare an emergency. Additional funding for dental insurance is necessary to ensure continuation of the city's dental insurance program. The insurance programs must be maintained in accordance with the negotiated labor contracts. The Human Resources Department requests to modify and extend this existing contract with Delta Dental Plan of Ohio, Inc., for one year, and to provide funding from February 1, 2020 through January 31, 2021, for this program. Due to ongoing labor negotiations with collective bargaining contracts citywide in 2018 and subsequent major changes to the city's health care, health insurance benefits, the Department of Human Resources decided not to engage in the request for proposal process for dental insurance in 2019. The Department of Human Resources will bid this contract out in 2020 for a start date of February 2021. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, I have ordinance number 6, 2020, to authorize the Human Resources Director to modify and extend the contract with Vision Service Plan, to provide all eligible employees vision plan administration from February 1, 2020 through January 31, 2021, to authorize the expenditure of $1,026,000 from the Employee Benefits Fund, or so much thereof as may be necessary to pay the cost of said contract and to declare an emergency. Additional funding of the Vision Insurance Program is necessary to ensure continuation of the Vision Insurance Program in accordance with the negotiated labor contracts. The Human Resources Department requests to modify and extend the existing contract with Vision Service Plan for one year and to provide for funding February 1, 2020 through January 31, 2021, for this program. The Department of Human Resources will bid the contract in 2020 for a start date of February 1, 2021. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, I have ordinance number 7, 2020, to authorize the Human Resources Director to modify and extend the contract with Dearborn National Life Insurance Company to provide all eligible employees life insurance coverage from February 1, 2020 through January 31, 2021, and to authorize the expenditure of $1 million from the Employee Benefits Fund, or so much thereof as may be necessary to pay the cost of said contract and to declare an emergency. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
And finally, I have ordinance number 8, 2020, to authorize the Human Resources Director to modify and extend the, wait a second, yeah, that's right, to extend the contract with Dearborn National Life Insurance Company to provide all eligible employees short-term disability insurance coverage from February 1, 2020 through January 31, 2021, and to authorize the expenditure of $3,650,000 for the Employee Benefits Fund, or so much thereof as may be necessary to pay the cost of said contract and to declare an emergency. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Yes? Councilmember Tyson.
The comment that I would like to make is really just overall on the benefits, I just want to thank Director Brandon and her team for the work that they do on an annual basis in order to present these resolutions for us. These benefits are so important as our staff, and all of us, everyone here works for the city, they're so important in terms of attracting and retaining employees in the city of Columbus. And so I just, again, want to just say thank you to her team for working with the, all the different agencies to provide these benefits, to bring a package to us that we know that has been looked at, is competitive, and so I just appreciate the work of your team. And again, just recognize the importance of having these benefits for each and every one of us and our families, how important that is. So again, congratulations to you, Councilmember Remi, for leading this effort and working with the administration. I also want to certainly thank the administration, the Finance Director, Mr. Lombardi, the entire team, for working together to ensure that our employees can come to work without having to be worried about, do we have these type of benefits, so that they can just focus on the residents of our community. So just thank you for your hard work.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Tyson. I certainly echo those comments. It's nice to have the opportunity to pass legislation that actually is a slight decrease over last year, and certainly for all those out there in the world that understand employee benefits, that doesn't happen very often. So we do applaud your staff and your efforts in making sure that we have a great plan. The city of Columbus is a great, great organization to work for, and we're certainly a benefit-rich government and city, but we want to make sure that we're doing it in a wise way, and you guys keep managing that very effectively. So thank you, Director Brandon. If there are no other questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you very much, and that's all I have this evening in my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The final committee before council is the Rules and Reference Committee. I chair that committee, but I'm going to turn the floor over to Council- I chair that committee, but I'm going to turn the floor over to Councilmember Dorans. Councilmember?
Thank you, Council President Harden. Tonight, in Rules and Reference, I have ordinance number three-two-two-one dash two thousand and nineteen to amend the Columbus City Code, Section five-ninety-eight point zero-three-B, to require all short-term rental permit applicants to submit to a background check performed by, performed by the Ohio Bureau of Criminal Investigation, otherwise known as BCI, approved provider prior to receiving a short-term rental permit. Tonight, I'm going to be, going to be asking again to move to table this legislation, to One of the major platforms has requested more time to provide information regarding their background checks procedure, answer some of the, some of our follow-up questions from the city. Public safety remains a top concern when it comes to short-term rentals in the city of Columbus, and deciding on thorough background check policy is one of the ways that we're actively working on to make sure this is happening. So it's important to ensure the safety of folks utilizing these rentals and making sure that we're following best practice as a city. So first, I'd like to move to remove from the table.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Remove.
Next, I'd like to move to table this legislation to our January twenty-seventh meeting.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Table.
Thank you, President Harden, this is all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I see no further business. Come for council, may I have a motion to adjourn? Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Council is adjourned. Regular meeting number three will now come to order. May the clerk call the row?
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the journal? Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Will now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee, and all members serve one, and Councilmember the floor is yours.
Thank you. Before beginning the zoning agenda, I'll briefly explain the rules of council as pertaining to speaking for council on varying, on zonings and variances. We permit three speakers on each side, three proponents, three opponents, and we ask that they limit their remarks to three minutes on each side, excuse me, and we provide an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant. On the advice of the city attorney's office, we ask that anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against any council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will.
I will.
Thank you. Excuse me. The first ordinance is zero, I'm sorry, is eleven, two thousand and twenty, to grant a variance from provisions of Sections thirty-three, fifty-six point oh-three, C-four permitted uses, thirty-three, three oh-nine point fourteen, height districts, thirty-three, twelve point two-one, A.D., landscaping and screening, thirty-three, twelve point two-seven, parking setback line, thirty-three, twelve point four-nine, minimum side yard, site, minimum numbers of parking spaces required, thirty-three, fifty-six point eleven, C-four district setback lines of the Columbus City Code for the property located at thirty-four, forty, Orland Tangee River Road, to permit ground-floor residential uses in existing apartment or office building with reduced development standards in the C-four commercial district. The applicant is Plaza Properties, care of Attorney Jackson B. Reynolds. The proposed use is to conform an existing apartment or office building. The city department's recommendation is approval, and there is no area commission. I first move to waive second reading.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, and now move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. The next ordinance is sixteen, two thousand and twenty, to rezone sixty-one, seventy-five, Sawmill Road, being one point five, one point five oh acres, located on the west side of Sawmill Road, one thousand feet south of Martin Road, from CPD Commercial Plan Development District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Meyer Realty Company, care of Brian Smallwood. The proposed use is fuel sales. The city department's recommendation is approval, and the Northwest Civic Association's recommendation is seven to zero. I first move to waive second reading.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. The next ordinance is twenty-nine dash two thousand and twenty, to grant a variance from provisions of Sections thirty-three, thirty-two point oh-three-three, R-two residential district, and thirty-three, fifty-six point oh-three, C-four permitted uses of the Columbus City Code for the property located at twenty-twelve Lockhorn Road, to permit senior housing, multi-unit residential development in the R-two residential district and C-four commercial district. The applicant is Homeport, care of Attorney Laura Colmac. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The city department's recommendation is approval, and the Columbus South Side Area Commission's recommendation is approval, thirteen to zero. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I first move to waive second reading.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. I now move to the next ordinance, and it's thirty, thirty dash two thousand and twenty, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections thirty-three, thirty-two point oh-three, R-one residential district of the Columbus City Code for property located at sixty-two, eighty-five Maple Canyon Avenue, to permit multi-unit residential development in the R-one residential district. The applicant is Homeport, care of Laura Colmac. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The city department's recommendation is approval, and the Northland Community Council's recommendation is approval, thirteen to zero. I know Homeport is in council chambers this evening, and I really do appreciate your commitment to affordable housing in our community. With that, I would move to waive, if there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move to waive second reading.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. The next ordinance is, is ordinance thirty-two dash two thousand and twenty, and it's to amend ordinance number thirty-one, forty-seven dash two thousand and nineteen, passed December the sixteenth of two thousand and nineteen, for the property located at nine-thirty-one and nine-thirty-seven West Town Street, to repeal Section one and replace the new Section one thereby reflecting the, the correct requested variances. So again, this is an ordinance amendment. The proposed use is a ten-unit apartment building. The city department's recommendation is approval, and the Franklinton Area Commission's recommendation is approval, seventeen to zero. If there are no questions or comments, I first move to waive second reading.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. The next ordinance is thirty-three, twenty-three dash two thousand and nineteen, to rezone fifty-one, fifty Warner Road, being eight point six-three acres located on the north side of Warner Road, four hundred and eighty feet west of North Hamilton Road, from R-Rule District to L-LAR-one Limited Apartment Residential District, and to declare an emergency. The applicant is Preferred Living, is care of Attorney David Hodge. The proposed use is multi-unit residential development. The city department's recommendation is approval, and the Rocky Fork Black Look Accord Implementation Panel's recommendation is approval, six to zero. First, I would like, if there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I want to move to amend to emergency.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. The next ordinance is thirty-three, twenty-eight dash two thousand and nineteen. It is to rezone eleven, forty-five Chambers Road, being one point one-three acres located on the south side of Chambers Road, nine hundred feet east of Northwest Boulevard, from the LM Limited Manufacturing District to the AR-three Apartment Residential District, and to declare an emergency. The applicant is Preferred Living, is care of Attorney David Hodge. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The city department's recommendation is approval, and the Fifth by Northwest Commission's recommendation is approval, four to zero. I, I do have a speaker slip, and so I would ask for staff presentation.
Good evening. The site consists of one parcel developed with two industrial buildings and is zoned in the LM-two Limited Manufacturing District. The applicant proposes the AR-three Apartment Residential District to permit construction of a seventy-eight unit apartment building. The site is within the boundaries of the Fifth by Northwest Neighborhood Plan, which recommends mixed-use land uses at this location. The request is consistent with the established development pattern along Chambers Road and with the plan's recommendation for mixed-use development. A concurrent council variance, ordinance thirty-three, twenty-nine dash two thousand and nineteen, CV-nineteen dash zero-seven-zero, has been filed to reduce building setbacks, maneuvering, and rear yard, and to increase lot coverage, to eliminate parking lot shade trees, and to allow stacked parking and reduced parking space dimensions for a limited number of required parking spaces. Therefore, city department's recommendation is for approval.
Thank you. I would now ask for a presentation or statement from the applicant. Attorney Hodge?
Good evening, President Harden, Chair Tyson, members of council, David Hodge, attorney for the applicant Preferred Living. Great project here. This is really an infill redevelopment over in the Fifth by Northwest Neighborhood. As staff mentioned, this is consistent with a land use plan. We were very successful working through the process with the Fifth by Northwest Area Commission, earning their unanimous approval. If you, if staff wants to flip back to the zoning map, you can see this is kind of an arm of, of Columbus in the midst of unincorporated property. I'd love to see the remainder of this stretch of street annexed to the city and redevelop similarly. I think there's some good chance that that may happen. Great project in a, in an emerging part of town, and that's really all I've got. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Attorney Hodge? Seeing none, thank you. We don't have any speakers for the project. Again, it was already approved by the city as well as Fifth by Northwest, but we do have one speaker that is against the project, and that's Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins.
Good evening. Sixteen, twelve Arlington Avenue, Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins for the North London area. I wasn't too for sure about the seventy-eight units you had up here on the slide. All I know is, I think this is a commercial industrial property that I pulled from the website. I'm in favor for this, but this is my first time speaking on something like this, so I just want to know the timeframe with these seventy-eight units will be built, and what are they going to be market rate for? I know that's a big parcel of a land. I know the guy talked about housing and retail, so what is the timeline and what will this look like? So if you can pull back up that slide for me, please.
Okay. What's your...
Yeah, I'm, I'm all done, but I am for this, not against this. I just want to know what the data will look like in that area. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. So Attorney Hodge, would you please come back up to the podium and, and share the time, the timeline, and just, I guess, the, I'm asking about, is it market rate?
Sure, thanks. So in terms of the, the timeline, assuming we're successful here this evening, there is some permitting things to finalize with the city, and they would then commence construction sometime in, during the summer months. In terms of the rents here in this, this is in an abatement neighborhood, so twenty percent of the units here will be set for, at affordable rates, below market. I think, I think it's ten percent at ninety percent of AMI and ten percent at eighty percent of AMI in this abatement neighborhood.
Okay.
Hopefully, that answers your questions.
Thank you. Just appreciate the ongoing commitment to affordable housing in our community.
Absolutely. More to come.
And we appreciate that, and I see Preferred Living in the room, and we appreciate your work of making sure that we have affordable housing in all neighborhoods of our community. That is, that's key. All right, well, with that in mind, if there are no questions or comments for Attorney Hodge, I would like to move to amend to emergency.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you, and move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And the component variance to this is thirty-three, twenty-nine dash two thousand and nineteen, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections thirty-three, twelve point twenty-one A, landscaping and screening, thirty-three, twelve point two-five, maneuvering, thirty-three, twelve point two-nine, parking spaces, thirty-three, thirty-three point fifteen, basis of computing air, area, thirty-three, thirty-three point eighteen F building line, thirty-three, thirty-three point two-four, rear yard of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at eleven, forty-five Chambers Road, to permit a multi-unit residential development with reduced development standards in the AR-three Apartment Residential District, and to declare an emergency. The applicant, again, is Preferred Living, care of Attorney David Hodge. Proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The city department's recommendation is approval, and the Fifth by Northwest Area Commission's recommendation is approval, five to zero. And again, if they are no questions or comments, I first move to amend to emergency.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is thirty-three, thirty dash two thousand and nineteen, to rezone eleven, ninety-four Mount Vernon Avenue, being point twenty-one acres located on the north side of Mount Vernon Avenue, ninety-plus feet west of North Ohio Avenue, from ARL-D Apartment Residential District to C-three Commercial District. The applicant is Leslie Thompson, care of Attorney Ashley Ingram. The proposed use is commercial development. The city department's recommendation is approval, and the Near East Air Commission's recommendation is approval, nine to zero. If there are no questions or comments, I wish to waive second reading.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Waive.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And the variance for this project is thirty-three, thirty-one dash two thousand and nineteen, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections thirty-three, twelve point four-nine C, minimum numbers of parking spaces required of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at eleven, ninety-four Mount Vernon Avenue, to permit a parking space reduction for an eating and drinking establishment. The applicant is Leslie Thompson, again, Attorney Ashley Ingram. The proposed, proposed use is an eating and drinking establishment. The city department's recommendation is approval, and the Near East Air Commission's recommendation is approval, nine to zero. I now move to waive second reading. There are no... Thank you.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Waive.
Thank you, and I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is thirty-three, thirty-four dash two thousand and nineteen, to rezone five-eleven South Hague, being two point six-three acres located at the southwest corner of South Hague Avenue and Roland Sunkar Place, from CPD Commercial Plan Development District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Adam Bates, and is care of Bruce Harris. The proposed use is the library renovation and expansion, so that's exciting news for the Hilltop. The city's department's recommendation is approval, and the Greater Hilltop Area Commission's recommendation is approval, fourteen, zero, one. If there are no questions or comments regarding this ordinance, I would ask, would like to waive second reading.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Waive.
Thank you. And now I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Certainly appreciate the library, not only building new libraries, but also renovating libraries for the residents of our community, so thank you. And that concludes the zoning agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Are there any questions or comments before? Seeing no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Remi Tyson, President Harden.
Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.